Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:35 PM. We will call this meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We have a quorum of the commission as everyone is present. If you all will please join me in standing while Commissioner Kinsley leads us in our invocation.
As we gather here today to discuss matters of importance to our community, we ask for your guidance and wisdom to grant us the strength to make decisions that benefit all residents and uphold the values that bind us together. May our discussions be thoughtful, our actions be just, and our commitment to the well-being of this city be unwavering. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Under state law, conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
Yes, on item 7L in the consent agenda.
None.
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 It's for the school district, just for closing streets, but at 7A.
Okay.
Moving on to item 3, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Items 3A, Mayor's announcements.
Mayor, do you have anything to announce? No, I don't think so. Okay.
Moving on to item 3B, City Manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to disclose?
Yes, I would just like to thank staff for putting on a great event at Lucha Libre and the Fiesta de Piñatas. We had the Fiesta on Saturday, which was great because Sunday the skies opened up and it poured almost all day. So, great work to Alexis, the DID, and Parks and Public Works that helped with that event also. That's all I have.
Okay, moving on to item 3C, City Commission Member announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
Yes, today along with Commissioner Morales and the city management team, I was able to attend a promotion ceremony at Harlingen Police Department where we got to see Martina Rodriguez promoted to sergeant, Guillermo Cavazos to commander, and Charles Fechner to deputy chief. And being someone who's spent 30 years of my life in service, I certainly appreciate what they do, as well as all our guys in blue back there along the back wall, and our STEC folks, and so on. So, well done to all of them. Congratulations, and thank you to all of you.
I'll just echo Commissioner Ford.
This guy.
This guy right there.
The Marines.
Kinsley, thank you. Appreciate you.
None.
Moving on to item 4, proclamation presentation of awards. We'll begin with item 4A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week. Ms. Shannon?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. We have with us tonight Lady. She is about two years old. She's a female pit bull. She is current on her vaccines. She's great with kids. She's been around kids five and older, so she's great with kids. And she's great around other dogs. She's in the process of learning some commands. She already knows how to sit, but the shelter staff is working on additional commands. She came to us very emaciated, very skinny, and they've been working to put some weight on her. She's been with us since June, and she is up for adoption. So, anybody who is interested in Lady is welcome to come by the Harlingen Animal Shelter at 1106 Markowski. They're open seven days a week, and they're open from 1 to 6 in the evening. And I would also like to happily report that Monty from two weeks ago got adopted as well. So, we are super excited. But this is Lady.
Thank you.
No, she's not. But I think Josh is going to do it.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Lady, and thank you, staff.
All right.
Item 4B, USTA Outstanding Facility Award to HEB Tennis Center.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commission. We're very proud, one, of course, to have Ramiro on our staff, but to be able to get this recognition through USTA. You know, those 41 participants that got awards throughout the US, there was two facilities in Texas, and we were one of them. The facilities were judged on the layout, the adaption to the site, the excellent court surfaces, the light, ease and maintenance, accommodations for players, the spectator and press office officials, aesthetics, the graphics, and it goes on and on, right? But we were nominated for the Public Courts, which is a large tennis center. And so, Ramiro and I were lucky to fly up to New York to receive the award. We have the award with us, the plaque. Mayor, I'm not sure if you want to present it to Ramiro. We can take a picture with the City Commission. But again, I'm very proud of the work that Ramiro's done out there at the facility. You know, we hear all positive things that are going on out there from, you know, the families, the kids, their reception to the people that are coming in. And so, again, I'm just very, very proud of the work that Ramiro has done out there. Do you want to say anything?
So, we'd like to thank you. We had a great time in New York just representing Harlingen. Yeah, it was... But I think, I mean, there were some really great facilities up there. There was one facility that won, that spent $33 million on the facility, and we were in the same realm. So, that was great, too, to find out. But I'd just like to thank the city for allowing us to get out there and represent Harlingen over there, Parks and Rec, just a ton of support from Javier and all the staff, all the maintenance crews, great. That's why it looks as good as it does out there. We really appreciate all of them. And the staff over at the tennis center, all the pros and the staff behind the counter, all of the reasons that he was talking about, what the public is saying about the facility and how welcoming it is. It's because of all of you, all of them, and all the staff at the facility. So, once again, just want to thank you for the opportunity just to represent Harlingen. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have that, but I just want to say thank you so much, Ramiro. I know you're thanking us, but really, you are the rock star here. Thank you for all your hard work, and you've done so much in such a short period of time. And I know that when we heard about it, I know Gabe told me and then Javier, and we were just over the moon so excited for you. And thank you for what you're doing for Harlingen and for the kids that are in this community, knowing, being able to see that Harlingen is on the map and representing us so well. So, thank you so much. If the commission can join me so we can provide the...
Ramiro, I'd just like to say thank you again. You're doing a great job from day one. You've been amazing to the city, and it was a great choice to hire you and bring you on board. So, thank you. Now, the only thing I have to say is that the tennis balls that I purchased at the center, they don't work. None of them work for me, so I need to figure that out.
We'll get you a new can for sure.
Yeah. Of course, invite the staff. Can you invite the staff? No?
Okay, so this is the 2024 Outstanding Tennis Facility Award. Goes to the HEB Tennis Center from Harlingen Tennis. Thank you for all of your hard work and for representing Harlingen. Can we all give him a huge round of applause?
Mayor, City Commission, before I sit down, I want to recognize somebody. We replaced our assistant Parks Director. And so, our new Parks Director is Juan Mendola III, and he comes from the city of McAllen. And he's been with us for a week today. And so, he's kind of hit the ground running and, you know, getting out there and meeting with the guys, meeting with the staff. And so, we look forward to working with him, and I'm glad he came to work for City of Harlingen.
The best city in the valley.
Yeah. Appreciate it. I just want to say thank you to the city of Harlingen for giving me the opportunity. Thank you to our leadership, to Javi. Great team, great staff. I met everybody one-on-one, and I'm excited to be here. And I want to thank the citizens of Harlingen also. Can't wait to improve and grow. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome to Harlingen.
Next up, we have 4C, Mayor's Business of the Month goes to Gulf Aviation. And the recipient is Ms. Arlene Garza.
We should. Can we queue up the video?
Gulf Aviation is a fixed base operator, or also known as an FBO. We are 100% woman-owned minority small business here in Harlingen. We are partners on the airfield with Valley International Airport, here to provide round-the-clock support in the need of whether it's a diverted flight, storms that we are preparing for, emergency operations, whatever it is that needs to get done, our team is here to get it done. My father started the company 45 years ago this year. I would say that it's always been in my blood. You know, after going to college, having family, coming back to the RGV, it was just understood and something that I wanted to do to continue the family legacy. And for that, I'm very thankful for my parents for allowing that opportunity. To our customers, thank you for believing in us and allowing us to service your aviation needs at Harlingen year in and year out for over the last 45 years. My husband, who is, you know, my partner in life, he is certainly my partner in business as well. And with his help and his support, we have continued to become very successful where we're at today. And lastly, but not least, I would like to extend a heartfelt appreciation to Mayor Sepulveda, Harlingen City Commissioners, the City of Harlingen, Valley International Airport staff and board members for their continuous efforts to support growth on the airfield and for allotting opportunity for small business.
I didn't see Ms. Arlene. There you are. I don't know if you want to approach the podium and say a few words and bring your family?
Arlene, is that your dad behind you?
It is.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yes. And so, you know, I'll let you say a few words, but I just want to say, you know, from the bottom of my heart, we are so grateful that you are here and that you have both chosen Harlingen, that the family has chosen Harlingen, and to see a woman-owned business celebrating their 45th year right here in the city of Harlingen, making through the pandemic and every other obstacle and challenge that you had along the way and coming out on the other side and providing this service on the airfield. We are just so excited for the future of Gulf Aviation and obviously for Valley International Airport. I did get a message from Marv and said he wanted to really be here, but I think he was going out of town. I hadn't had a chance to read all of it, but he wanted me to extend his congratulations to you as well. So...
Thank you so much. And like I said in the video, you know, it's a team effort, and we really are a partner on the airfield. And we appreciate, you know, the opportunity to continue operating, and we look forward to the continuation of our operation. There is just thank you from the bottom of our heart. It means the world to our family. So, thank you again.
If I can get the commission, and we'd love to take a photo and give you your award.
Moving on along to item 4D, proclaiming the week of October 6 through the 12, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week. Before we call Chief Valdez and his team up, we do have a proclamation to read, and it reads as follows. Whereas the City of Harlingen is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all living and visiting our state, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally. Homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,700 people in the United States in 2022, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, and fire departments in the United States responded to 360,000 home fires, and roughly three out of five fire deaths happen in homes with either no smoke alarms or with no working smoke alarms. And working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half. And whereas, smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And Harlingen residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home. And whereas, Harlingen residents will ensure that their smoke alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and they should test their smoke alarms at least once a month. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And the Harlingen Fire Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries throughout prevention and protection education. And Harlingen residents are responsive to public education measures and can take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas, the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You, remind us of the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. Therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim October 6 through the 12, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city. And I urge all the people of Harlingen to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Harlingen Fire Department. Chief Valdez?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. It's a great time. We're getting ready for October. But before that, every June, NFPA keeps his waiting as to what the theme's going to be. And when it did come out, it was very interesting that it'd be talking about smoke alarms. Smoke alarms are some of the issues that we take for granted. We always assume they should be working, but sometimes we don't test them. The batteries are not working. So, with that reminder for us to always make sure that they're working for us is what we're going to preach and remind people throughout the year, not just during Fire Prevention Week, is that we really need for the devices to do what they're intended to do. And to survive a structured fire, because they did go off, is something that shows that engineering and technology is there for people to use to their benefit. And that's something that through maintenance and testing, it can be done. And nothing's sadder than hearing the news that people did not have working smoke alarms in their home during a fire. That's very detrimental. And so, we're going to go out in October during Fire Prevention Week, educate the schools, the kiddos, which is a great time. Based on the fact that the school is so large and the demand is so high, it's more a fire prevention month than it is Fire Prevention Week. And there's also that autumn break for the schools. So, we've got to work with the fact that they're gone for a whole week in October, too. But as far as the fire department, we're ready for it. It's challenging, but we're excited. Now that we're really trying to, you know, get back to normal, COVID did really stop us from being out in the community. But now, because of, you know, everything that's going on, the demand is high, and we're being able to go to these and provide our education. And that's something that's so exciting. And I appreciate the fact that we, as a team, do everything we can to go out in the community and preach safety year-round. It's not just during one week, one month. It's year-round. And I would just want to say that our team, our department, through our great leadership, does a great job of reminding us what our true job is, and that is to be public servants and to be there for the community. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Just to let you know, we did bring Sparky, but he's not up for adoption.
I was going to say, I didn't see him when y'all were hiding him back there. I said, what happened this year? You didn't bring him. Can we... I think it'd be great if we could all have a picture with our caps and join the fire department. How about that?
Do I have to wear the cap?
Yes. I don't know if that's the cap.
I see that. Thanks.
Looks good. You look awesome. Fantastic. You look awesome, sir. Continuing on to item 5, Citizen Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the City Commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for a public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the City Commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on any topics addressed. Mayor, we had seven silence for citizen communication. We will begin with Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Mayor, Commissioners, Raymond Reyes, excuse me, 706 Nantucket Drive. Well, I mean, as we can tell, and I've said before, we've got a lot of good things going on in Harlingen. Of course, as anything, and I've stated many times, we've got to take the good with the bad. Sometimes we make decisions because we get an impulse. We think it's the right thing to do, or we somehow think we're going to be glorified or we're going to be remembered. And, you know, what I would say is to keep in mind that, you know, we need to do the right things for the right reasons. We don't always agree on things that should be done. Just this past weekend, Mother Nature reminded us that she's going to do what she does. And I myself, because I own some property in downtown Jackson, went out there where there was some work done to prevent, AKA, you know, flooding and stuff, which was quite interesting. I had never really seen it. Well, but I know why, because I had notified some departments about it. My side that I own, where the spot is, used to be known as the Fox and Lady Saloon, was working perfectly as far as the drainage. But on the other side, where Luna is and that other restaurant, I had notified some departments that there was palm trees and debris and everything in there and stuff. And sure enough, I was able to post a video where that side was completely flooded and stuff. And going on past G Street, on Jackson, some of the streets, they were completely submerged. Of course, you know, since we have our modern technology, I posted some nice videos so we can go back and look at those areas and make sure it gets addressed. You know, proper utilization of the tax dollars, and I know there's a tax increase, but, you know, I've been paying taxes a long time. There's always an increase. There's always something behind the increase. But, you know, if the money's not being utilized correctly, and we want to give ourselves kudos because we've got X amount of dollars in a reserve, if something actually happens, and let's think about this, and I look at it from the military standpoint, you know, do you really think if something bad happens, there's going to be meetings and things of that nature? If things go wrong, and I can guarantee you, based on my experience, that, you know, something's amiss. And, you know, the economy's not doing that good. I know of eight businesses that shut down. And I know other businesses that are having problems. A lot of citizens are struggling. A lot of my employees are having problems. That I give them a little bit of extra so they can survive. So, we need to take all that into consideration. That's y'all's job, not mine and stuff. But I get bombarded all the time because I'm not one to sit aside and not speak up. I'm definitely going to say something. And, you know, we just got to do the right things for the right reasons. And with time, and if we do the right things, we'll be remembered for the type of person we are. Buzzard beat me this time, unfortunately, but, oh, well, it's a constant battle. Y'all have a good afternoon, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Next up, we have Mr. Rakesh Patel.
Hi, everybody. Dear members of the City Council, I'm here to express my concerns regarding the proposed use of the Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund for the renovation of the Casa del Sol property. While revitalizing our city is essential, I believe that this particular expenditure lacks sufficient justification and accountability. The funds allocated from the HOT Fund should be used in ways that directly enhances tourism and benefit our community. However, it is difficult to ascertain how this spending on Casa del Sol will yield measurable benefits or attract visitors. The lack of clear metrics to verify the effectiveness of this investment raises significant concerns about fiscal responsibility. Moreover, there are numerous alternative projects and initiatives that could make more substantial impact on our local economy and community, from enhancing public spaces to supporting local events. There are better ways to utilize these funds that would provide tangible benefits for Harlingen residents and visitors alike. I urge the council to reconsider this allocation and explore options that will ensure our resources are used wisely and transparently. Thank you for the attention on this matter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patel.
Okay, up next, we have Mr. R. Frank Lozano.
Good evening, City Commission. I rise again to speak out against item 4.
I rise again to speak out against item 10H on the agenda, the tax increase, once again. The City Commission does have the opportunity, this last opportunity for this 2024 tax year, to lower housing costs for hard-working families here in the city, to lower housing costs for retired fixed-income individuals here who might not be able to afford increased mortgage rates, to lower the cost for first-time homebuyers who might be struggling to make that extra amount of money to pay for the housing. These are the things that are important to the citizens of Harlingen and why we need to adopt, instead of the voter approval rate, the highest tax rate that this commission could adopt by law without a referendum, to adopt the no-new-revenue rate, which would be the same amount of money as was spent in the prior year. Now, I don't, we want to take a little bit of this limited time just to address some of the arguments that were made at the last City Commission. There was buzzwords thrown around, like living wage or defund certain departments. The living wage, if the no-new-revenue rate allows the same amount of money as was spent last year this year. If you weren't paying the employees of the city a living wage last year, if you need more money to pay them more this year in order to get a living wage, does that mean that you were not paying them the living wage last year? That's the question. As far as defunding certain departments, I don't know why that is always on the chopping block first when there's plenty of other places that can be looked at. Now, there's 21 new positions that the city is trying to implement. Some, the City Commission has been very quick to point out the most beneficial ones, which is the paving road crew for the streets. However, there are other positions, three open positions for the social media or propagandists, as I would call them. And that's not necessary for the city to function. Other places that could be cut, I mean, the City Commission just this past year decided to bring in the RGV Humane Society in-house, increasing costs. Now, you're going to take $200,000 more dollars from the Community Improvement Board in order to cover the cost. This is more money for less services, for a less humane Harlingen that has more deaths of animals. So these are some of the things that the City Commission could address. But I don't think the question should be, what is it that we can cut from the budget? The question should always be in a budget, why is it that we need this item from last year? If you're just adopting the same budget from last year without reviewing it. And I'm not saying that there's been no review, however. Any business would tell you that you go through line by line and say, what is the return on investment for this item? And if there isn't sufficient justification, then that item should be removed. Now, those are the reasons that I come to speak out once more against the item 10H, and I humbly and respectfully request the City Commission to consider the hard-working nature of the citizens of Harlingen and putting, keeping those dollars in their pockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano.
Next up is Mr. Rudy Coronado.
Rudy Coronado, animal advocate and resident of District 3. I'm here today to address a deeply disturbing issue, the alarmingly high rate of euthanasia at your Harlingen Animal Shelter located at 1106 East Markowski. On August 29th, under the Public Information Act, I submitted a request for information to your city secretary housed here at this building. I obtained data on animal intake such as adoptions, rescues, euthanasia, and key stats like that. What I found was devastating. Since the city, under the leadership of the mayor, Norma Subuvira, and Commissioner Renee Betis took control of the shelter, the rate of euthanasia has skyrocketed to an industrial scale. In July 2024 alone, out of 244 animals taken into your shelter, 203 were euthanized. That's right. Out of 244, you all euthanized 203 animals. And those aren't unique numbers. June and the previous months up until January, it's all like that. Okay? Yeah, that's disturbing, and that's heartbreaking, Betis. It really is. You made a promise to me and to every citizen that once you took over that shelter, that you were going to find every furry little animal there a home. Did you not? You did. All right? These are not just numbers. These are lives, okay? Furry little animals with heartbeats that you all euthanized. And that's just, yeah, okay. What makes this situation even more frustrating is that $200,000 is supposedly secured for spay and neuter services. Meanwhile, 203 animals were put down in a single month. How can we justify needing that money for spay and neuter when you have no animals? Okay? You keep about, what, 60 to 15 animals a month? Okay? These are your numbers that came out of this building from your city secretary, okay? This is not misinformation, Betis, all right? I don't do that. Okay? When you all took over, I was expecting spay-neuter clinics, vaccine clinics, high adoption numbers, high rescue numbers, okay? We got the total opposite of any of that, okay? And I was, I stayed out of your hair. And I was hoping for numbers like the Humane Society and Palm Valley Animal Shelter, okay? They're, they do what should be done for the citizens and for the animals.
Thank you, Mr. Coronado.
Next, we have Desi Martinez.
Hard line to follow. I have cha-cha at the house. Anyway, I want to congratulate you on a good note. MMA and branding, Harlingen, and all the other activities that we're trying to expand as marathons, bringing in people to run from Mexico internationally, from the Congo, throughout Texas here. And real fast, I know it rains. I come from one of the communities I work for.
Mr. Martinez, let me just, I don't want to, I'm sorry. Before you get started, I don't want, I want to make sure you have enough time. I was noticing here, you said you wanted to speak on two public hearings.
Well, these are, they called me back and said I couldn't.
Do you have two public hearings? They're not, okay. I just wanted to-
It's, they clarified it was action items versus public hearings.
Okay.
No, I don't want to get into the public, no, it won't take too much of my, your time.
I'm sorry. We'll give you a little more because I interrupted.
Thank you. The MMA promotion is tremendous. You bring international, as well, families into this organization we have and others. I propose, and it takes it to the next note, which is the consideration of what Mr. Patel was talking about. I'm not against using tourism funds that we have. I work in the business as a journalist, as an economist. But how much, and where can we tap different sources to get there? What would happen, and you've built buildings and not built buildings, and worked with technical teams. What if I told you the possibility of doing revitalization, including this committee you're setting up, the National Revitalization Project, to develop and bring back traffic into downtown and build up the community again, along with HUD programs, along with EDA? If we could bring $6 million to match the $3 million that Gabriel's proposing. Now, there's three options as builders, and I think you're going to open your eyes on it. I hope we do, both of you, to bring this revitalization concept to the table. Demolish, I'm not in favor of that. Reconstruct, as Gabriel was saying, for $3 million, and we still have a building that we don't have any numbers to, like Mr. Patel said. Or maybe consider the structure, superstructure, making a pavilion for new startup businesses and other activities internationally in Dietmo Terrey, San Antonio, Houston, that we are the I-69 connection to those industries from Mexico as well. So there's so many things we could do, but to take action today on a off-the-hip type deal isn't justified. I agree with Patel, but there are other sources. And we can all work together, set up the committee, and I'll be happy to help assist you, volunteering on it for that. And within 90 days, we'll give you a turning key project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
I brought you some things, Mayor, on more promotions.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, next, we have Robert Lethwich.
Robert Lethwich, 909 East Park. But I just, back here again, we got 2.5 million.
Mr. Lethwich, did you want to speak on Citizen Communication or the public hearing?
There's no public hearing. We've already, it's already been discussed. I hope you add that time back onto mine. The fact is that we're going to talk about this tax notice right here, right, 2.5 million. It's, $350,000 of that is new construction. So not all of that is on new, is new construction. 2.15 million is on existing taxpayers. I just wanted to bring up something, the tax levy yield curve over the last four years, because there's three people up for reelection in November. And when y'all got into office-
Excuse me, Robert, could you start again, please?
It's, we can all hear, it's fine.
Okay, we're talking about the yield curve on the levy. The levy amount, which is what everybody pays, was $21,385,000. Now, this year, after this 2.5 million property tax increase, it's going to be $27,547,000. That's an increase over y'all's term, and I know Commissioner Morales has voted against these increases, of $6.12 million. And all we hear is that y'all are lowering the rate. Yeah, you're lowering the rate, but the levy's going up? The certified tax totals are going up. The certified tax total was $3.4 billion. Now it's $5.2 billion. Let's look at some comparisons, because we heard Commissioner Lopez, you said last time, well, you know, you mentioned that if we didn't like the tax increase, we could go live somewhere else, which I thought was kind of unprofessional and not a very good statement from a public servant. So I did. I went and looked at another city. And you overlooked the fact that McAllen is a pretty nice place to go live. Well, their tax rate is 10 cents lower than ours. And their budget is not $27 million. It's $57 million, and their tax increase was only $1.7 million. How can the city of McAllen have a smaller tax increase than the city of Harlingen? Well, what it is, is wasted mismanagement. We just heard about it. The fact that y'all took over the shelter, instead of leveraging with a nonprofit that already had a $600,000 a year contribution, now y'all are, we have, no longer have a foster focus. Now it's a kill facility. Do you need the same staffing levels if all you're going to do is euthanize those animals? I don't think so. Y'all misled the public. Y'all are doing it on the tax increase. You did it when you took over the Humane Society, turned it into a bureaucratic city shelter. You're wasting our money. There's no need, when the city of McAllen only needs $1.7 million, they've got a $653 billion, a million-dollar overall budget. That's way more increase than we need, and y'all need to focus on that.
Thank you, Mr. Lethwich.
Up next, we have Ms. Lorena Galarza.
Hello. Sorry. My name is Lorena Galarza, and I reside in District 1. So I'd like to start off with quoting Norma, what you posted on Nextdoor app. And if those of you are not familiar, you can download it. I'm going to read quote-unquote what she wrote about what happened to this city on Sunday. This is going to be a long post, but an important one. So I encourage you to stick with me. On Sunday, Harlingen experienced a significant rainy vent, receiving nearly six inches of rain in just two hours. It's important to note that when you get that much rain in such a short period of time, water is naturally going to collect on the streets. Don't be alarmed, that's expected. What's critical is that the water receded quickly and that it doesn't go over the curb. As your mayor and a resident who lived through the floods of 2018 and 2019, I understand firsthand the challenges flooding brings. That's why, since taking office a little over two years ago, the City Commission has made drainage a top priority. If y'all are interested in reading the rest of her quote-unquote statement, like I said, go into Nextdoor app. Well, I'd like to invite you, Ms. Mayor, to down to Linda Avenue, because from what I understand, you were out of town on a trip. I wanted to invite you to bring your plunger with you because all the residents in District 1, we communicate, since I oversee the neighborhood watch. And all of us had to be getting plumbers to go unclog our toilets. Fortunately, I did a service request to the Harlingen Water Works, and they remedied the situation that evening. Unfortunately, a lot of people had to pay for plumbers. We're in a time of inflation, Mayor. This, I'm not buying any of those quotes you're putting. You can try to sugarcoat it to other people, but I'm sure if anybody went on there, they will see the videos and all the problems that we had. Not to mention, I had already addressed this board, this commission, in reference to the fraudulent activity as far as when you all, the city sells a house. You all have not updated the flood codes since the 1970s. How is it that you did three tax increases in two years, but flooding is your top priority? I think not, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Galarza.
That concludes our Citizen Communication, ladies and gentlemen. Moving on to item six, Approval Minutes. Item 6A, Special Meeting of June 28, 2024. And item 6B, Regular Meeting of July 17, 2024.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as is, or are there any amendments?
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item seven, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
I asked the full seven A and seven L, and then I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, let's also do O.
O? So we- A, L, and O. Anyone else?
A.
A motion to remove those three items and to approve the rest.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
A, L, and O. Do you have one you want to?
Okay, this is, okay, yes. Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Item 7A, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Request from the Harlingen High School Student Council to Close the Following Streets, 900 Block of Marshall Avenue, Intersection of 7th and 9th Streets, Wednesday, October 23, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. for their high school homecoming parade.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Commissioner-
Epstein.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Request from the Parks and Recreation Department to Close the Following Streets.
L.
L?
L and O, just, you could read L first.
I said I as in A-Y-E.
Oh.
I thought the same thing.
Okay.
Consideration and Possible Action to Approve an Agreement with the Marine Military Academy for the Use of the Hotel Motel Funds to Promote Tourism by Maintaining the Iwo Jima Monument Attachment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Abstention from Commissioner Kinsley. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Item O, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve the Installation of Speed Humps in the Following Locations, East Washington, Northeast Street, 1200 West Monroe Street, and 1600 East Van Buren.
I just, I received it from a resident on, I'm not sure. I don't think this is you, 1202 West Monroe, on West Monroe Street? It's your east.
Yeah, I'm east, east west.
Yeah, I'm east, east west.
Okay, so I think that's District Four. Can we add that to the study?
Yes, ma'am.
And then if the chief is here, I'd like to see if there are any accidents on that street. You could send that to me.
Excuse me, ma'am.
What was that address again, Mayor?
Well, I don't want to give the specific address, but in the 1200 block of West Monroe.
1200.
Well, that's what this says, 1200 West Monroe.
Okay. Right, oh, well, I'm sorry. I thought, so you added that. Okay.
That, but see, in speaking, talking about accident, referencing accidents, there was one, and you found a mistake in the 500 block of West Monroe.
I think it's in, I don't know if it's this specific, it's, that's why I'm asking if you can assist in telling us, I don't know where along there there'll need to be the speedhumps, but it'll be helpful to have accident report to see, so that way they're placed in the locations where it's most needed. Because I got some pictures, did you see of an answer?
I didn't get those pictures.
Okay.
So let me ask Oscar, I guess, you're the answer man on this. So this has all been approved by the engineering?
No, this is to start the process.
It says installation.
To approve the installation, but that involves the engineer conducting his analysis?
Okay, so no analysis has been done yet?
No, this, this will start the process.
Okay.
They'll only do them if it's needed.
Correct.
Yeah, I was going to add one, too. I got a call from constituent. I want to do one off North Vista de Sol, between, well, Bass Boulevard and North Vista de Sol. Drive.
And I guess, Chief, if your office can send it to both, to the city commission and then to staff. Thank you. All right, is there a motion approved?
Motion.
Motion approved, subject to the supplement by Commissioner Peters.
Okay, and second by?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, city manager's report.
I would just like to say that we're going to have a joint report at the next meeting to talk about the issues regarding the recent rain activity that we had. That would allow discussion between the commission and staff, so that's all I have.
Excuse me, when is that, that meeting?
At our next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yes.
And I do want to take a moment to commend the Public Works Department. I don't know if Chris is here. I don't, there you are, Chris, and Oscar, and city management. I know that this entire commission and myself were on the phone and through phone calls and messages and reaching out to you, so that way you can take action immediately, and I do appreciate that. And I know that there was significant rain, almost six inches of rain, and to see all of the hard work that you have been putting in, in the maintenance and in the improvements, and especially in the detention over in Lozano Pond, and seeing that rise to three feet and taking that, keeping that water off the streets was really instrumental. So I applaud you, and I look forward to your presentation at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I just wanted to commend you guys as well, because I got a lot of, some calls from my constituents, and they were impressed with the improvement in the drainage in our area. And I give you guys all the credit, because you guys are the rock stars. So thank you very much, Christopher, Ruth, and Oscar. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
I think it was all Ruth. I'm just hitting Chris. No, but really, thank you. It really means, it really means a lot. And I know that there was a lot in everybody's district, really, and so this is, this is definitely helpful, so thank you. All right.
Okay. Item B, staff reports. There are none to disclose, Mayor.
Okay.
So we'll move on to item 9, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. There were no signups for public hearing today.
Okay, well, then let me just do this real quickly. Item 9, item 9A, public hearing for an SUP to allow an adult business in a general retail district located at 117 Eastport Court, Suite 1, bearing a legal description of Lot 5, Block 1, Eastport Center subdivision. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against, or having signed up, we'll close the public hearing. Item 9B, public hearing for rezoning request from residential, single-family District to Neighborhood Services District for 1.73 acres of land out of Block 6, Section 297, Stewart Place Re-Subdivision, located on the southeast corner of Stewart Place and Brenham Roads. This time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against. We will close the public hearing at this time. Item 9C, public hearing amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, offenses and miscellaneous provision, Article 5 offenses involving public peace and order, Section 34-114, noise disturbances, by adding a provision which exempts properties located within industrial zone or land use from the noise regulations. This time, we'll open the public hearing on this item, having no one here to speak for or against or signed up to speak. We will close the public hearing at this time. Item 9D, public hearing for the voluntary annexation request of an 8.36 acre tract of land legally described as Lot 1, Block 2, Georgette subdivision located at the southwest corner of Bass Boulevard and Johnson Lane. At this time, we will open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against. We will close the public hearing. Item 9E, public hearing for the voluntary annexation request of 56.45 acre tract of land out of Survey 295 Stewart Place subdivision located along the south side of Garrett Road, approximately 650 feet east of Altas Palmas Road. This time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against this item. We will close the public hearing. Item 9F, public hearing for substantial amendment to the City of Harlingen's 2023-2024 one-year action plan in the amount of 39,000 from Vestal Park lighting phase three to Vestal Park improvements. This time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one to speak for or against this item, or having signed up, we will close the public hearing at this time.
Continue on to item 10, action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit SUP to allow an adult business tattoo studio in a general retail district located at 117 East Porte Court, Suite Number 1, bearing a legal description of Lot 5, Block 1, East Porte Center subdivision, applicant Gabriel Vargas, planning and development.
Good afternoon. Mayor Commission has proposed tattoo studio on Porte Avenue, it's kind of behind the Dairy Queen on Lou Ferrigni 9, and that's the building where they're proposing to locate. We have no opposition. The planning and zoning commission are recommending approval unanimously.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, caption, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, ordinance number 16-8 of the City of Harlingen, to issue a special use permit SUP to allow an adult business tattoo studio in the general retail district located at 117 East Porte Court, Suite 1, bearing a legal description of Lot 5, Block 1, East Porte Court subdivision, applicant Gabriel Vargas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential, single-family R1 District to Neighborhood Services NS District for 1.73 acres of land out of Block 6, Section 297, Stewart Place Re-Subdivision, located on the southeast corner of Stewart Place and Brenham Road, applicant Moreland Surveying, planning and development.
This item was withdrawn by the applicant.
Okay.
And he will apply again late this year or early next year.
Okay, thank you. Moving on.
Item C, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, offenses and miscellaneous provision, Article 5, offenses involving public peace and order, Section 34-114, noise disturbances, excuse me, by adding a provision which exempts properties located within industrial zone or land use from the noise regulations, applicant City of Harlingen, planning and development.
Mark, can you read the caption?
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, offenses and miscellaneous provision, Article 5, offenses involving public peace and order, Section 34-114, noise disturbances, by adding a provision which exempts properties located within an industrial zone or industrial land uses from the noise regulations, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation request of an 8.36 acre tract of land legally described as Lot 1, Block 2, Georgette subdivision, located at the southwest corner of Bass Boulevard and Johnston Lane, applicant Georgina Enzual Gonzalez, planning and development.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose an 8.36 acre tract legally described as Lot 1, Block 2, Georgette subdivision, located at the southwest corner of Bass Boulevard and Johnson Lane, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10E, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation request of a 56.45 acre tract of land out of Survey 295 Stewart Place subdivision located along the south side of Garrett Road, approximately 650 feet east of Altas Palmas Road, applicant Javier Inojosa, care of Carlos Navey, planning and development.
Mark?
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the City of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose a 56.45 acre tract of land out of Survey 295 Stewart Place subdivision, located along the south side of Garrett Road, approximately 650 feet east of Altas Palmas Road, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It seems like over the past year, we've had a bunch of annexations. What are we, like 200 acres bigger than we were a year ago?
Sounds about right. It's a work, sometimes, working with the property owners and convincing them to come in. So sometimes, they want to come in from the beginning, and sometimes it takes work in convincing them or selling the city.
It's certainly a lot easier when it's voluntary, but I think the one good thing about the annexations you just mentioned is that the majority of them are subdivisions.
Right.
So it brings in housing units, additional property values, and more importantly, population.
So in other words, you're saying District 5 is booming?
That's not exactly what I said, but I, 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 okay.
That's what you meant.
Okay.
But we are very happy, and we welcome everyone back into Harlingen. Great job, Javier.
Item 10F, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading, amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, solid waste, Article 2, collection and disposal, Section 38-29, heavy bulky waste collections, by clarifying the date and location to place bulky items for collection, Section 38-31, duty to provide receptacles specifications by clarifying the size of the receptacle for single-family residential, Section 38-33, receptacles to be accessible to collectors by clarifying the accessibility of the placement of the garbage container, and Section 38-39, tree limbs, brush trimmings, and the like collection by clarifying the date and location for brush to be placed on city right-of-way for collection services, applicant City of Harlingen, planning and development.
Mark?
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, solid waste, Article 2, collection and disposal, Section 38-29, heavy bulk waste collections, by clarifying the date and location to place bulky items for collection, Section 38-31, duty to provide receptacles specifications for clarifying the size of the receptacle for single-family residential, Section 38-33, receptacles to be accessible to collectors by clarifying the accessibility of the placement of the garbage container, and Section 38-39, tree limbs, brush trimmings, and the like collection by clarifying the date and location for brush to be placed on city right-of-way for collection services, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
I have a question. How will the citizens of Harlingen know this change?
So it was, this was discussed at the last meeting.
Right.
There will be some social media efforts, and then we're going to work on the door hangers, and then it's going to be a lot of courtesy notices to get to, get people to comply.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Item 10G.
Just one second. I'm going to move a little around. I know you're really fast, Robert, but I see Gerald here. I'm sure he's got, he's been working hard, and all the wonderful work you do at the Boys and Girls Club. We won't have you stay and wait all day for us to do this. So let's just move over to item, let's see.
10R.
10-
R.
R.
Q, no?
10Q. Let's go to 10Q, and then 10R. Can we?
Thank you, and 10R.
Javier, you're up.
Could you read Q?
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Consideration and possible action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2025, for 145,757, for 10 service programs, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract, Parks and Recreation.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item R, consideration and possible action to approve a contract with the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen for fiscal year 2025, for 140,104, for youth service programs, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract, Parks and Recreation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for all of the wonderful work you do for the Boys and Girls of the City of Harlingen. Thank you. And I think Mr. Patel is here, too, so why don't we move over to W?
W, consideration and possible action to allocate 1 million from the hot fund balance to the Casa del Sol renovation project, city manager.
Mayor, members of the commission, as you know, we had Scott Josloff, the president of the Hotel Motel Association for the State of Texas, here a few weeks ago, and one of the, during his presentation, one of the things we asked him was if we could use hot funds to address the issues with Casa del Sol. And he said most definitely that we could. We'd have to track the hotel stays that we anticipated would generate. And so based with that, we had John Piercy volunteer his services to come in and give us an analysis on what has happened to the Casa del Sol and what the implications are. So what we did immediately was we canceled all events through the end of the year. It is closed to the public for now. We anticipate that it'll be closed through June of next year. And he also gave us a project estimate on what he would take to renovate that facility, to bring it back to its original glory, and that cost in today's dollars was about 3 million dollars. So in order to start the process, we need to get engineering, design, structural engineers to give us their opinion of the work that's going to need to be done to the, to the facility, and then get that in order to actually go out for bids, to get someone to give us a quote for the renovation. So this would start the process. This would allow us to hire an engineer, an architect, and any other type of professional that we would need, asbestos and lead base, all that, to get a true picture of what needs to be done to the facility.
So I have some questions.
Yes.
So where will the other 2 million dollars come from?
We would have to apply for grants, and perhaps ask some of the other funding agencies that are part of the city to actually help with some of those costs. Could be the 4A, the 4B, could be the city funding part of it ourselves. We haven't made that decision yet. The first thing we need to do is, because the facility is shut down, come up with some plans on what it would take to actually bring it back, so.
And this facility, the last couple of years, well, exclude COVID, but- And this facility, in the last couple of years, well, exclude COVID, but in the last couple of years, who uses this facility and for what?
It does get a lot of use, especially on the weekends, a lot of families use it for quinceaneras, banquets, it's relatively inexpensive to rent, when you compare the cost of renting that facility, it's about a thousand dollars compared to the, say, the cost of renting the convention center, to rent all of it would be about eight thousand dollars, so there's a huge difference, and so a lot of people locally do rent it for various events. We've had, in the past, we used to have the Feast of Sharing, a part of that in that, in that building, but they've since moved to the convention center.
So with regards to Mr. Patel's question, do all the towners use it, do all the towners come here, and do all the towners stay here?
All the towners come to look at the facility because of the pedigree of how it was designed and created, the architect that designed the facility is very famous, Taniguchi, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is there a historical marker there?
No, it's, it's not a historical structure yet, but it, it could be, but is the, my thing is, I just have a question because I know it's coming from the hot fund, but like the amount of tourism that it's gonna generate, is it, does it generate like about a million dollars worth of tourism? We haven't done an analysis for that, Commissioner, we did have recently a group of architects that actually went inside the building, even though it's closed, to look at it, and so the majority of those people were from out of town, I think it was a group of about twenty that were visiting, and so they stayed in hotels here, and so it does generate revenue, but whether it generates a million dollar mark, I can't answer that right now, we don't know.
Just so y'all know, I've been working with Anna to look at grants on this, Anna sent me an email, I'm willing to share it with you guys. It was slim pickings out there for grants, the grants were like ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars for historical renovation, for you to start getting into like the big-ticket historical renovations, we would have to get, if Anna's here, or Oscar can speak to it, we have to get a special designation, remember how we had talked about at one point, like that, like that, like film-friendly designation, or that city friend, or that music friend, it has to go that route, and because of like the, the record-keeping requirement, she recommended that we'd end up having to hire someone to do it, and then it just became burdensome just on the organizational side of it, right? And so, as you recall, we had the guy come and speak to us from the hot tax, that's where I got the idea that this money can be used for this, it is gonna take about three million dollars total, but I've been working with Josh doing research on how we can create a whole, what I'm calling Harlingen architectural slash arts tourism industry based on not only this building, but numerous buildings that we have throughout the town, I think we have, I looked last night, I gave an email to Mr. Patel, if he recalls off the top of his head, I think there's like twenty buildings in and around Harlingen that have architectural significance, that includes the Lotsy Hill Building that we have, the old public library that was designed by John York, and then we have a bunch that was, that are in park places, there's actually one down the street from my house, I just found out last night when I was doing the research, it's on the corner of Pierce and Thirteenth Street, it's a pretty cool house if you drive by it, and so the opportunities, the financial opportunities are a little slimmer than I would like, you guys know I always go for grants on this type of stuff, but this is one method we can do it.
Have we, have we got any input from, I'm sorry, have we got any input from the CV board or anything like that, because I know those are the guys that, you know?
Correct, no, we have not, and I'm going to table this, I talked to Mr. Patel about it earlier, and I know Sirang reached out to me about bringing it before the CVB board, what I learned today, and I didn't know this, is that unlike the four B board, the four A board, they don't really necessarily approve this meeting on this, but I agree with Mr. Sirang that if we're gonna go this route on the hot tax, we want to make sure that the recording method or the metric method meets all state standards, and so I would like, if we could table this for two weeks, have a special meeting, and Mr. Patel said he would work on setting one up between now and our next meeting, for them to get on board, learn about it, ask questions about it, and then also for us to talk to the gentleman who came and did the presentation, the one from Austin, to make sure that the metrics he gives us is something that we all feel comfortable with.
I agree.
The things I'm looking at, like the fifteen thousand dollar grant, I've already talked to Anna about applying for, is I wanna do an audio tour for all the different buildings, right, and so I think there's a lot of really neat avenues we can go on this to really build it up, and I told Mr. Patel I'd love his input, Sirang, I didn't know this, but apparently he went to college.
Architecture.
For architecture, right, so I think Sirang would be a fantastic person, any of you guys want to be on board with this, museum, so on so forth, so that as we develop this architectural industry in Harlingen, we get the best feedback, we get the best input to make it as successful as possible.
So I think that's a, that's a great idea, and I was gonna suggest to potentially table it, I didn't get a chance to talk to Mr. Patel, but I did speak to another board member that had, you know, similar reservations, the only thing I would add is maybe Mr. Piercy could present to them as well.
Absolutely, I can ask him.
I think that that would be helpful, and, you know, our CVB board, I think, is very unique in that it really does have folks that are in the, in the industry, hotel, you know, and then convention center, and I think it's gonna be important for them to give input, I didn't know that either, that they don't make recommendations, which is the reason why it wasn't on the agenda.
Well, to clarify that, they're supposed to provide a recommendation to the CVB staff on the use of their funds, and provide strategies for marketing for using the funds, but for the CVB, this is coming out of the hot fund balance, which is something that's outside of the purview, so they wouldn't normally make a presentation on how to use the fund balance portion, or using funds for the MMA, for HPAT, for the Burning Festival, those are outside of their, their purview because it's coming from funds, hot funds that they don't have access to, but we can certainly work with them to provide a presentation on, on this, and just a reminder, the twenty-fourth, we're trying to have a joint meeting with the EDC, so the entire commission hopefully can make it to that meeting, so that date would be out.
Okay, I'll work with Mr. Patel to figure out a date, that you can get a quorum with your members, and then if you can give me like two or three dates, I'll work with Mr. Piercy to see if we can get him in to answer any questions you guys have, okay?
So Gabe, they don't, they don't have control, I didn't, I didn't fully understand that, so this is the, the hot tax money, but because it's already in the fund, is that what you're saying?
No, the ordinance that created, the CVB has a making recommendations to the CVB board on strategies for marketing for the CVB.
Okay, and that's it?
That's it.
Okay, well, maybe we should revisit that, just because of their, their input, I think is, is valuable to be able to have them in the conversation, I understand that it comes to the commission, but it would be, I think it'd be helpful so that way, especially since we're gonna be moving forward and trying to really maximize after we had that presentation, and I think that way we're not wasting any time, right, when things come before the commission, they've already, they've already had an opportunity to take a look at it, so maybe we can revisit that, that ordinance if it's possible. So did you, was that a motion to table?
Yeah, I'll take a motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. Patel, for your time, and you're welcome to stay, I just, you know, sometimes these can go really long, and then I also tell David from Borba, so Javier, well, let's go to Pete. Am I missing anybody?
Item P, consideration and possible action to approve a request from the Harlingen Parks and Recreation Department to close portions of the following trails, Arroyo Colorado hike, hike and bike trail, Henry Roberts Loop, Arroyo Delta, Como and Almost Trail, and portion of the Frank Bogus Memorial Trail for the showdown at the Arroyo October twelfth and thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Parks and Recreation.
Yes, Mayor, City Commission, this request here is to close down these portions of the trail at the, of course, the Arroyo Colorado hike and bike trail, and then the, the thicket, and then, of course, we're gonna be hosting the, the actual race at Arroyo Park, and so David is here with Borba, and, you know, I really appreciate him, you know, picking Harlingen to host these, this race, and again, this is the, I guess, the only race south of San Antonio on this series, and so, again, we really appreciate him helping us build the trails, and then also bringing this, this mountain bike race series down here to Harlingen, he's here to speak to y'all, I guess, make the request.
Yes, definitely, Mayor and City Commission, thank you for your time today, very excited, this is the third annual showdown at the Arroyos, which we're calling Showdown at the Arroyo Tres for this year, it'll take place the weekend of October twelfth and thirteenth at Arroyo Park, we're expecting anywhere between two to three hundred racers from around the state, from Mexico, from surrounding states, to come down for this race, I was just in Sugarland this past weekend, and they had over four hundred racers, so we could have a very big turnout this year as demand and participation increases, and we've been working very closely with local hotels and really promoting the City of Harlingen for this event, and we're very excited to once again have it, and we created a promo video this year, and one of the new things we're doing this year as well is we're gonna livestream it using Real Sports Live, which typically does like high school football games and things like that, so this is the first time that this event has ever been streamed, and to my knowledge, the first time it's been streamed in over a decade here in the state. So we're very excited about that, so you don't have to come out and be out in the heat, hopefully we got good weather that weekend, you can watch from the comfort of your living room on TV, so.
So David, I just want to say thank you so much for what you're doing for the community, and I know aside from this, y'all do a lot of volunteer work, and I, I was also telling the folks from Bicycle World last time when we recognized them, that y'all work closely together and do a lot of cleanups out on the trails, and no one pays you to do that, but you do it out of the love of our trails and making them beautiful, and bringing people here and shining a light on the City of Harlingen is amazing, last year was great, I know that this year's gonna be even better, I know I've been talking to Visit Harlingen about how we can make next year's, because I hear you're coming back next year, even, even bigger, and we had this conversation on the hot tax also when we had Scott come and talk to us, and your type of event is something that we want to support you and to ensure that it can just grow and become bigger and bigger, and I know that when I was there last year, there was folks from Canada and from Mexico and from all over, and they just, right, Javier, they kept saying, your trails are amazing, they're beautiful, and so we hope that obviously they all come back and, and more, more, more want to join too, and so I just commend you for all the amazing work that you're doing here, we'll know that the commission and obviously city staff and management, I know you've worked closely with Javier, but let us be a resource for you, see how we can support you in these, in these efforts, we thank you so much, did you have something?
No, I was just gonna say thank you, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you so much.
I think those are the only ones waiting on you, so we can go, we can go back.
So we'll go back to item ten G.
Yes.
Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading adopting the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five by record vote, finally.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, this is the second, second and final reading of the budget, just to recap, a total proposed revenues are one hundred and fourteen million three hundred and eighty-five thousand one eighty, one eighty, and our proposed expenditures are one hundred and fifteen million five hundred and eighty-five thousand thirty-four, and this does include all of the funds of the city, and this does have to be a record vote.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you back there, I'm gonna get you next, those in fishes are just gonna be able to go, go home too, sorry, you were hiding, okay. All right, so are there questions? No? Okay, so everybody has their?
If I could just say something?
Yes, sir.
More of our taxes that we receive are from sales tax, when we vote to lower the tax rate, everybody's city taxes, city property taxes go down, comma, unless the Cameron County Appraisal District raises the value of those properties, and then we get more money, and then we offset our gains by lowering the tax rate, and if you want to keep last year's number, then you're going to have to forget, we live in an inflationary world, and, you know, I went to Walmart this week, my once a month visit, it was like three hundred and some dollars, I nearly choked, right, but the price of asphalt, the price of concrete, the price of machines, everything has gone up, and if you want to put financial stress on the city, if you want to destroy the city's double-A rating, go ahead, but I'm not going to sit here and destroy our financial status.
Well, I'll just also, just, you know, and I know that next item will be to adopt the tax rate, but in terms of the budget, I know that you worked really hard, and, and Gabe worked really hard to really take it down as, as far as it could, and I know that there's been talk about the adoption of a no-new revenue tax rate, but when you look at no-new revenue means if you're going to have the same revenue that you had the year before, then you can do nothing different than you did the year before, and so that makes it difficult for communities to continue to, to grow and to provide the exceptional services that we want to provide, you know, having to fund Public Works, having to dip into the general fund, which I think typically, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know, I don't remember Harlingen doing that in the past, I know you've been here for twenty-one, twenty-one years, I don't recall, unless I'm wrong, actually going into the general fund to make these capital improvement, you know, purchases, so that way we can have a drainage crew, so we can have a street crew, has that happened in the past?
We, we have dipped into the general fund balance before, but only for capital costs, not for operational expenses, because those are recurring, and so what we did out of this year's budget, we did go into the fund balance for the general fund, but only for capital items, to create the street crew, to pay for some construct, capital equipment for some of the departments that we needed, others were paid for out of the revenue that we're going to generate, but all the, all the positions that we're creating are coming from the revenue that we're creating outside of the fund balance.
Right, so I think, you know, we are being responsible in ensuring that we are not, there's no wasteful spending here, those twenty-one positions, I think, I know that there was some comments about the, the Communications Department, we have the one position, and it's to fill the position that was already on our, our books, right, and now we're replacing that position with a new, with a new person to fill that spot, and in addition to that, we have more groundskeepers, we have more, you know, people in parks, people in, in, in Public Works, and those are places where it's essential, and I don't even think that we have sufficient people in parks, having spoken to Javier and to Public Works, and to Chris, and even Manny over in, in Code Enforcement, we need more people, but we can't grow that fast, and so we're trying to do that responsibly, but no-new revenue means no-new, no-new positions, no-new equipment, no-new anything, and, and, and doing what we did just last year keeps us at the status quo, I think that the city wants more, the city wants more places for, to take their kids out to the, to the parks, I know that we've talked about the recreation in your district and, and all the work that's being done in Vesto Park, and creating opportunities for people in neighborhoods in District Two to be able to have a, a, a park in walking distance for health and wellness, things that are happening in District Five, so that way people can go out also to the parks, the trails in your district, parks in, in District Four, it just, all that takes, takes money, and, and we have, we are reducing the tax rate again this year, we reduced it last year by ten percent, and, you know, we can't be making comparisons, I don't care what's happening in McAllen, I don't care what's happening in Brownsville, I just care about Harlingen and taking care of the people in Harlingen, so if one point seven million or two million or three million is what's happening in the other communities, I can't worry about that, I have to worry about what's happening right here in Harlingen, and so we just heard about all that annexation, and I'm, I'm glad that you brought that up, you said how much?
I think it's two hundred acres.
Two hundred acres, so you better believe, once those subdivisions are constructed and more people are moving into the City of Harlingen, what does that mean, more services, more garbage to be picked up, more water, more sewer, I mean, all of these challenges that we are having, and we are doing simultaneously, growing the City of Harlingen and working on these challenges that we have, but in addition to that, those people are going to be paying property taxes on those homes, which is going to increase the levy, and, and, and there's all this conversation about levy, and, and that the levy is going up, in an economy, in a growing economy, it's gonna consistently go up, you're gonna have more people coming into the community, more taxes that are gonna be collected for more people, more businesses. more taxes that are going to be collected for more people, more businesses. What was the building permits that we had as of last month?
Last year, last year was 176 million. As of last month, it was 119 million.
So, 176 million last year alone, 140, this, is that where we're at right now?
No, I think for now it's 119. Javier, is that correct? 119 million for building permits through last month?
This fiscal year, 139 and change.
That's what I thought. You're cutting me short here.
With one month to go.
And we have one month to go, so I would really like to meet what we did last year. So, last year, first, you know, last fiscal year, I think was new for this entire commission. And we had record numbers. The last time, it was in 2012, which was, and what was 118 million in construction value. And we surpassed that with those numbers last year. And we have already surpassed that 2012 figure this year. And we hope to surpass that again this year. And so, with that means that there's more folks coming in. And I know, I don't see Kareem here, but he did a wonderful presentation. There he is. And he did a wonderful presentation last city commission meeting and talking about that that levy, those additional funds, aren't just coming from single-family homes. They're coming from the railroad, from co-ops and so many more taxing properties and not just the single-family homes. And so, it is misleading to say that that is what's happening. And so, I hope that, you know, this commission really considers the fact that we have given ample opportunity to every single commissioner that sits on this dais to look at the budget and see if there is any wasteful spending. And I heard from each and every person on this commission that there was no wasteful spending and there was nowhere to cut. And so, with that, we should all be proud of the budget that we have crafted together after weeks and weeks and months and months of workshops and meetings and separate meetings that each of you do on your time off to meet with finance as well. And so, we need to be sharing that information because that is factual information. It's sometimes it's difficult to hear when folks come up here and say things in public comment because public comment is just that, it's commentary. It does not mean that it's true. It doesn't mean that it's false. It just means that that's a person's opinion or perspective. But what we do here, this is what we're doing in a transparent way so that the community knows that we are being good stewards of taxpayer money.
May I mention about today's economic news?
Sure.
So, people have mocked the city of Harlingen because last year we made a million dollars on our short-term investments. Like, that's a crime. Interest rates a few years ago were 0.1, 0.2, and we made chump change. Today, the Federal Reserve reduced interest rates by 50 basis points. And what that means is by a half a percent, they reduced interest rates by 10%. Short-term interest rates. They can only control the short end of the yield curve. So, that means all things being equal, we're only going to make 900,000 or less this upcoming fiscal year. And if we are heading into a recession, they will continue to lower interest rates, which means less money to the city. And so, you have to plan, whether it's your business or your household or your city, you have to plan for rainy days. And we know some of our income source is going to fall, guaranteed.
And another thing I would just add is that this commission has been very focused on where we are spending our money and where money was spent in the past. And I know that we reviewed contracts, reviewed leases, did everything that we could to make sure that there wasn't any wasteful spending. And we can't forget that because the city was in a great financial situation, we were able to, and I think you eloquently explained in detail, where we had to take money out of our general fund and the EDC fund to pay off a loan that the city had entered into years and years ago that was just accruing interest and was really going to be on the backs of taxpayers for decades to come, probably 20, 30, 40 years. And we were able to extinguish that debt. And what does that do? That lowers our general fund. And so, even though we were able to do that and to make sure that that debt was going to be extinguished and the remaining small, you know, interest that was left over was going to be frozen in time, that is something that this commission did unanimously also. And we can't forget that that was almost a little over $3 million that we had to take to be able to do that. And so, those are things that I don't think that people really consider. And they don't, maybe they're not so engaged or don't know that that's something that we did, but we are doing that. So, the work here in the dais isn't just done every first and third Wednesday of the month. It's really all the time, 24/7, it seems like, especially when there's a rain event, right? So, this is something that we have done and we have carefully reviewed everything. And like I said, no one on this commission has expressed it to me or in any of our meetings that there's anywhere that we can cut on this budget. So, I think what you've done and what you've provided is really the best that we can do at this time. And we hope that next year, we're able to have an even, a budget where we're going to have these expenses, these one-time expenses are not going to be on the budget. So, we'll all be in a better situation. But making the investments in our people and in the equipment that they need is really going to help this entire community moving forward.
Thank you.
All right. So, is there any other comments, questions for Robert? If not, is there a motion? Do you have something to say?
Yes. On this particular one, the consideration and possible action to, on this budget, we're short a million and change. Two weeks ago, how are we going to balance this one out?
Gabe?
That's a, this is the balance budget, Commissioner.
Okay, because when I have a proposed revenues of 114 million, proposed expenditures of 115.
That's because we can't count the, we transferred about 3 million from the fund balance, three to, three and a half. We can't count that as new revenue because it's already in our savings account, so to speak.
And plus, we are doing one-time purchases for one-time items.
And as we discussed this at the last meeting.
For future reference, can we really take into consideration lease to buy?
We're leasing some of our police cars now, Commissioner. And we're leasing some of the golf carts that are going to be delivered pretty soon. Those are all being leased.
I'm referring to the big-time purchases for the Public Works and so on.
I don't know, can you lease like a maintainer or?
You can, but at the end of the term, what do you have? You spend a lot of money in lease and then you're still going to have to go look for more equipment because equipment is needed here. I mean, as you and I have had this conversation before, we're in dire need of equipment and that's what we're doing right now. The citizens keep asking for more, which they should, and we're trying to produce with more with less and it's hard, you know? Our department has, our Public Works Department has grown from a little bit over 105 employees to close to 130 and we're still short on meeting the expectations that we set for ourselves. So, it's very hard. We need, constantly need equipment here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, is there a motion?
Mayor, do we need a reading?
This is an ordinance.
Oh, yes, sorry.
An ordinance adopting the revenue and expenditure budget for the city of Harlingen, Texas for the fiscal year October 1, 2024 through September 30, 2025, providing for publication of the caption to this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
And this will be a record vote?
Record vote.
Oh.
Well, that's not this one. This is the second one.
They do require a record vote on this.
Right, but we still need a motion and a second.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, is there a motion?
He made a motion.
Yeah, a motion.
And a second. Okay, then we'll start with Commissioner.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Page?
I'm to nature. Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading adopting the tax year 2024 ad valorem tax rate for maintenance and operations MNO together with the interest and sinking IS rate for fiscal year 2025 by record vote, Finance Department.
Again, this is the second and final reading of our tax rate. Our MNO tax rate is proposed at .453628 and our interest in sinking is .073896 for a total rate of .527524. This is, this is, this is a lower rate than last year.
1.7 cents.
And once again, despite it being a lower rate, we have more tax revenue.
Correct.
Okay. And so, this is going to require three motions? And so, can I get the first motion?
Well, Mayor, I think the attorney needs to read the caption.
Oh, you didn't read the caption, I'm sorry.
In ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas, levying ad valorem taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024 and terminating September 30, 2025, providing for a portion each levy for specific purposes, providing when taxes shall become due, when same shall become delinquent if not paid, providing for publication and effective date and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So, before we do that, I just want to, I want a reminder because I didn't bring it with me today, but at the last meeting and I know that more, others will be tuning in at home, there was mentioned earlier that there was one city with, one city in the Rio Grande Valley that was lower than us in the tax rate. But do you remember some of those that were not?
I do, actually.
I don't know if you have that with you, but it...
Other ones include Primera, Palm Valley, La Jolla, Alamo, Brownsville, Edinburgh, Donna, San Juan, Los Fresnos, Wesaco, Port Isabel, Progresso, San Benito, Combs, La Feria, town of Indian Lake, Farr, Mercedes, Elsa, La Villa, Riondo, Santa Rosa, Ed Couch.
And those all have higher, and some have much higher tax rates. And in addition to that, I was really trying to look and I know you and I tried looking and I couldn't find a single city that adopted the no new revenue rate.
Yeah, no, it's hard to find. They pretty much go voter approval or just below the voter approval.
Right. Okay. Just wanted that for some clarification. Okay, and so, we do need the...
I'll do it.
First motion?
I moved that...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, huh?
I moved that the maintenance operations tax rate be fixed at 0.453628 per 100.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and then we'll start with Commissioner.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Aye.
Okay, and you got that?
Yes, thank you. I move that the interest and sinking tax rate be fixed at .073896 per 100.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, I'm sorry. Kinsley?
Aye.
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 We have one more?
I move that the property tax rate be increased by adoption of a tax rate of 0.527524 per $100, which is effectively a 5.57 increase in the tax rate.
Okay, Kinsley?
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, sure you're spouting. Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Okay. You got what you needed?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And thank you for all of your hard work and your team, city management.
I'd like to say thank you also to the commission for doing that.
Okay. Can we move around again, Melinda? And let's take up the loaves and fishes.
That is... I think that may have been in consent.
Yeah, I think that's in consent.
There's the two contracts, right? One for 75, one for 15.
Yeah, it was J and K. They were done in consent.
Page three, the bottom of page three.
Okay.
Yeah, we already put those.
All right, well, for the record, Commissioner, I really wanted to get that out as soon as possible, so. Thank you. Okay, then let's keep on going.
Okay. Item 10I, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Harlingen Community Improvement Board budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025, Finance Department.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This is the resolution for the 2025 budget for the 4B, the Harlingen Community Improvement Board. We have total revenues of 2,510,000 and total expenditures of 2,449,428. The 4B board did meet on the 5th to review and recommend approval of this budget.
Is there any...
Any question to approve, aye? Second.
I have a question. Actually, I have a suggestion. First things first, I'm not in agreement of dropping 200,000 on the spay and neutering services. My suggestion, because they'll...
It's in the budget. And you were saying?
My suggestion, my recommendation would be to really consider and have a good discussion with the people from the Humane Society. Because as we stand, two years ago, they got 400,000. I'm sure by now we've doubled in expenditures over that 400,000 and it's just going to keep on increasing. So, now you know why I'm not, I disapprove of this. Thank you.
Wait. Are we talking about in this...
We're talking...
Giving 200,000 to the shelter for spay and neuter?
Yes.
That's in this, okay. Shannon, I have some questions, please.
Yes, sir.
I know males and females different cost to neuter. What does it cost to neuter an animal?
Cats are, it depends on which vet you go to because they all charge varying prices. I would say males are between 80 and $100 for a cat and females are about 120 to 140.
Okay, dogs?
Dogs vary on size, 0 to 25 pounds, 26 to 50, and then 50 and above.
Approximate cost?
I would say anywhere from 150 to about 300, depending on the size.
So, $200,000 would neuter about, what, am I right, 10,000 animals?
I don't want to try to do that math in my head.
Yeah, just doing it in my head.
Math is not my strongest suit.
Gabe has those numbers.
Okay.
I think, I think to do, and we did it on dogs, it's about 1,100 animals.
We got a reduction in the rate.
Because of what?
Reduction in the cost for the spay and neuter.
Okay. You know, the shelter is becoming a money pit. It's becoming a black hole in which we toss money. And this is CDBG money, which would go to help out certain individuals who got in line and gotten, to get their animals neutered. It's not for the good of the whole city. It's good for a few people. Oh, oh, where's the money coming from?
It's 4B.
Quality of life projects.
Quality of life project, okay. Quality of life is fixing the pools. Quality of life is adding to parks, fixing parks. As I recall, we needed like 34 million dollars in a perfect world to make all of our parks perfect. We're not, it's an improper use of the money.
When that board met, was that the only thing they looked at and considered? I mean...
They actually had to approve the budget for this upcoming year. So, they met to consider, to approve that. They'd actually approved funding this about eight, nine months ago. But we had to go to the process of having a public hearing, advertising newspaper for 60 days and then advertise again for the public hearing. So, when they met, they actually had to approve this budget, which is for the upcoming fiscal year, which also sets aside funding for some of the upcoming obligations. And then, they approved, this was the only project, the new project they approved.
So, just to kind of put things in perspective, we've been working on this for almost a year, right, I think? And I know you mentioned that the public hearings, but the Community Improvement Board, and this was run by Mark to make sure that this was an appropriate expense.
That's correct, and it's a public health issue.
It is, and it is a public health... It, it is, and it is a public health issue, um, the other, other committed funds on here on the budget is the Destination Park, uh, Phase Trails, Phase Two and the Trails, there's a little bit of a million on there, the Tony Butler Golf Course, all of the money, the several millions of dollars that we've spent on the, on the golf course for those improvements came from, from this, uh, from this board as well, um, and there's been, obviously, the debt service for the convention center comes in here, there's about a hundred thousand that goes into that, so this is, when you're looking at the entire, um, these total adopted expenditures of two point five million dollars, you're getting two hundred thousand that's dedicated to spay and neuter of pets, and I know it, you know, it's, it seems that, you know, that there's still this constant conversation, uh, and I don't know why you mentioned that, Commissioner Morales, when everybody, it was unanimous for the city to move forward and to move past where we were in the past, and to have the Harlingen Animal Shelter, that was unanimous, it was not just, um, you know, one person or two, or city management, or city staff, or any, it was an entire, it was a decision that was unanimously made, and, you know, to say otherwise is just not true, um, and I don't know, Commissioner Mesmer, if that is, as you mentioned, um, a money pit, this is not money that we're throwing at the shelter, um, the money that is, this is going to be, to be able to provide spay and neuter services, it, it, it really boggles my mind that anyone would be opposed to spay and neuter in our community, it has been a challenge, there are animals that need to be spayed or neutered to control the pop, overpopulation of pets, it was, you know, again, how I mentioned earlier, sometimes you can come up here and say things in public comment, and, and people take that as truths, but there are other issues, and I'd encourage you to look into the issues that the shelter has been, had been tasked and challenged with, with distemper, distemper is something that if it is gone, if it goes through the shelter, it's highly contagious, and what happens to animals that are, that end up with distemper, and it spreads throughout the entire shelter, there is going to be euthanasia, and that is, that is not something that's unique to the city of Harlingen, so, so taking, you know, uh, uh, an isolated incident and then making it as if that is the goal of the shelter is, is just absurd, and, and, did you know that, Commissioner, that that is what happened, because if not, I would encourage you to, to...
Is that, is that why we're, why we have two hundred and somewhat, uh, euthanasious animals?
That is, that is...
That's the reason behind it?
I'm not sure that exact number is accurate, but I know that there was, and I spoke with the Health Department, and with city management, and with Josh, and with our vet that we have, and it was the vet's decision to make these decisions on the pets that had distemper, they work really hard, that staff there, you know, to, to really say that they're not working hard, or there is no foster program, or they're not doing adoptions, I encourage you to spend time, if you haven't been out to the shelter, to go see the hard work that they do, then I encourage you to do that, because every single person that works in a shelter, no matter whether it's the city of Harlingen, or any other shelter, anywhere across the region, across the state, there are good people that work there, and so we need to remember that they are human beings that work there, they're doing hard work, and we need to provide them the resources that they need, this, I know that you are very, uh, you have a soft spot in your heart for cats, you've got a ton of cats, we have an ordinance...
Dogs and parrots.
Okay, we have, uh, uh, I, I know that everybody here gets the calls about the ordinance that I think you pushed through when I wasn't here on this commission, um, for...
You voted for it, Frank.
And you voted for, for that too, and it was to go out into the community, and when they capture the, the feral cats, to bring them into, um, the, the, the shelter, and to either do the spay or neuter, and then put them back out into the community, that is an ordinance that's in our books, we haven't been able to really live up to, to, to what it is that we're supposed to be doing under that ordinance, because we don't have the additional funds, and it was not happening before, I know people keep saying that it was happening before, I encourage you to look into that, because if you talk to the community at large, they will tell you that it wasn't happening, and there was no access to, to the shelter, people were not allowed to bring in animals into the shelter, it was, and, and we've gone through this, and I don't wanna re, you know, relive it, but you know that that is, that is accurate, this two hundred thousand will go to every single animal that is adopted out of the shelter, will be spayed or neutered, which will minimize the overpopulation in our community, right now, we have a great relationship with a local vet, and she is doing all she can to help us, and when we have those longer term stays, because we do, right, we have long-term stay pets, and those get spayed or neutered, so they can be more desirable for adoption, and they are adopted, and it becomes beneficial for the person to adopt these longer stays, because they've already been spayed or neutered, now, all pets that are adopted, so that way we have more control, and we don't have to, you know, wait for them to, to come back to be spayed or neutered, it'll be, that will provide us that opportunity, in addition to that, the feral cats will be able to spay or neuter them, put them out in the community, and those we have, we have a problem in Harlingen, and it's not just Harlingen, if we're being honest, it's all across the Rio Grande Valley, all across the state, so this helps that, is it a quality of life, yes, it's a public health issue, and that is the reason why this commission was concerned previously, because of the stray population, you had that, you almost got attacked by a dog, just the other, the other...
Two pit bulls.
Two pit bulls, right, we wanna be able to, to, to control what we can, and this gives us the opportunity to do that, this money is, is coming from the, the Community Improvement Board, they approved it unanimously, and if, I, I, I wouldn't, I don't understand why you would not support spay and neuter.
How much do you wanna spend on what we have going on right now, how much, when are you gonna say we have spent enough money on our animal shelter before you can say, you know what, I think I made a mistake, we made a mistake, a million, two million? Because if we can work together with the Humane Society, a lot of this can be taken care of, if we work in conjunction...
I don't understand.
I'm sure you don't understand, because, I'm not trying to go back, but the, at the end of, look, I, I take that back, I take that back, I am going back.
Okay, let me, let me, I understand what you're saying, and if you, if you regret your decision that you made, then I can respect that, if you feel like you made a mistake, and that you voted incorrectly, and that you made a decision to move with the Harlingen Animal Shelter and move away from the Humane Society, then I can respect that and I accept that, but, that doesn't change the fact that we are here where we're at right now, and, and, and we, and, and I, and we need to be responsible and do the thing, do what we need to be able to provide an opportunity to reduce the pet population in our community.
Remember, it was a consensus vote back in there, it wasn't Frank was for it, okay, but that's okay, we, we can say potatoes, potatoes, it doesn't matter, at the end of the day, I'm opposed to this.
Okay, and the other thing is that you keep saying that we should go back and work with the RGV Humane Society, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did have an RFP out, and it was for a nonprofit to run the shelter, and it, and, and in addition to that, I made sure through, through our city staff, that the RGV Humane Society knew that they could apply to be able to provide services for the city, and did they apply?
Not, to my knowledge, no.
Did they do a proposal?
No.
No, right, and the reason why it, I'm sorry?
They declined.
They declined, exactly, they declined, so you keep saying we should work with them, they haven't expressed a desire to work with the city of Harlingen, we did not terminate their contract, we didn't renew their contract, and so when we, when their contract expired, we went out to see what was best for the city of Harlingen, because there were a lot of issues, and, and you were conveniently, you know, forgetting the issues that were present, there were a lot of them, and I know that you, you know, you wanna forgive all of that and just focus on, on one issue, but, that's, that, that, that's not, that's a disservice to the community, there were problems, we addressed them, we gave them an opportunity to ensure that what they were going to do was going to be transparent, and they were going to be able to provide us where every single dollar of our tax dollars, of our community's tax dollars were going to go, and they could apply, they declined to apply, so now here we are, so you're the only one saying, let's go with them, because they're not here asking for this contract, they, they are not servicing the city of Harlingen, city of Harlingen animals are at the city of Harlingen Animal Shelter, period, and so we have an obligation now, if you wanna vote against spay and neuter, I'm taking that is that you don't care that there are animals that need spay and neuter, because those folks that may potentially not be able to afford it, you know, we have an opportunity to fill that void, and in addition to this, we're going to ask the Community Improvement Board potentially for additional funds, to help even more people, as more, so that way we can tackle the problem, every single vet and every animal advocate will tell you that the way to solve this problem is through spay and neuter, and now you don't want to get on board with a solution, because you're still upset that you feel like you made the wrong decision.
This, this is not the solution, okay?
What is the solution? Tell me.
Thank you, but no thank you, here's the situation...
Now, what is the solution?
Hear, hear me out, what, you're gonna spade and neuter two thousand, tops, animals, if they're at, if they're at a hundred, is that gonna turn the tide? I don't think so, okay, you're looking at two hundred thousand, at a hundred dollars a, a, a service, that's what, two thousand? Two thousand animals that you, is that gonna turn the tide? Is that gonna clear, clear up a lot of, uh, the, the strays out there?
Give me a second, you're a very intelligent man.
Well, thank you.
If a cat, if a cat produces, how many times in your life?
You asked a simple question, here's the complex answer, I think it was Fibonacci who, who looked at the reproduction of bunny rabbits, and, um, back in the, whatever, sixteen, seventeen hundreds, and cats go into heat, what, two, three times a year maybe, and one female cat in the course of a year, and you multiply that times a couple of cats, you're talking ten, fifteen, eighteen, twenty thousand cats in a year, uh, dogs tend not to have as big litter as cats, but the numbers are outstanding too, and you brought that pit bull, which I don't like, and I could see its nipples, I could see it's a mama, and I don't know how many puppies it had.
We don't either.
Yeah, but dogs and cats reproducing, and I, and I do, and I do understand...
One cat, one cat can have how many cats, kittens?
Uh, twenty-four, and that first litter by the end of the year can produce hundreds more.
From one cat?
It's, it's not arithmetic, it's geometric.
Understand, but two thousand is gonna go a long way.
And I do understand public health issues, I do understand all the disease and the vectors, trust you me, I understand it, at my Rotary Club, what, twelve, fifteen years ago, bef- uh, the Humane Society came and asked us for fifty thousand dollars only to neuter female cats, because it's senseless to neuter male cats, male cats will kill each other off, and if you want to curb a population, you have to neuter the females.
I think this is the goal, is to, for the...
But, but given all of this... Yeah.
So, again, I ask you, Commissioner Morales, what is the solution?
I don't have the solution that'll satisfy you.
No, I'm...
Okay, so at the end of the day, like we've done before, we'll take the vote, I'll give the nay vote.
And you won't have a reason for your nay vote?
But, what I will do, if you don't mind, I will reach out to members of the, uh, Humane Society, and see if they're willing to come to the table, would that be okay?
You're welcome to do what you will, but I will say that they declined the proper process, and I'm gonna give a hundred percent support to our staff and the shelter, uh, because they need that.
That's fine.
But, again, you're welcome to do what you, so what I'm hearing is that you're voting against it, you have no solution, other than the fact that you regret your decision in the past, and you want someone else to operate the shelter.
Keep in mind, you're an attorney, so we'll just move forward, please.
And you're a commissioner, and you should have answers to these very important questions for our community, and you have no solutions, you sit here and you...
I'm already giving you an option, but that option I will be exploring myself, okay, so let's see what happens in, in two weeks, okay, maybe they'll come, maybe they'll come to their senses, like, you know what, let's put bygones bygones, let bygones be bygones, and this is at the table, but I do realize, uh, we still have some hurt feelings here and there, so...
It's not about feelings, Commissioner, it's, it's about doing what's right, and, 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 you know, all I'm hearing is that you have no solutions, you don't wanna support the shelter, and you're not supporting city staff, and, and, and that is just disheartening, but I, but I understand your position, I respect that, um, is there any other discussion?
Mayor, if I could just, Commissioner Kinsley, we did have, um, a placeholder of half a million dollars, but that's something that finance recommends we do, uh, every budget, that money is not allocated, it's just put out there in case somebody asks, do you have funding for a particular project, so, that five hundred dollars that's in the, the budget right now is not allocated to, to anything, it's just a, a placeholder.
Thank you.
And this is a qualifying expense?
Yes, it is.
And it was unanimously approved by the...
By the board, yes.
Okay, so...
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Item ten J, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution ratifying the property tax reflected in the adopted budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, Finance Department.
Thank you, so now that the, the budget has been adopted, we, we do need to ratify the tax rate into, that is included in the budget, and this is a resolution.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item K, consideration and possible action to declare the itemized list of non-real estate personal property as surplus personal property as recommended by staff, and authorize city personnel to conduct a virtual online public auction of said property Saturday, October twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, Finance Department.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten L, consideration and possible action to establish a steering ad hoc committee for the comprehensive parks and downtown master plans, planning and development.
The comprehensive plan and Parks Master Plan and Downtown Master Plan Project has commenced with the consultants, uh, we need a steering committee to, uh, meet and guide the, the process, uh, the proposal is to have two members from this city commission, two members from the Planning and Sonny Commission, two members from the Parks Board, and two members from the Downtown Board.
I'd like to be on the steering committee.
As would I.
So can I just attend, is this, is that, is that gonna be an issue with the quorum?
I think three is fine.
Yeah, according to the charter, uh, we won't have issues with quorum on this one.
Okay, okay, well then I think then that's good.
And then, I, I did include that staff should be part of, uh, this as an ex officio capacity, including yourself, uh, the DID manager, um, the parks...
Mendez.
Uh, yes, and, uh, and the city manager.
So then can it be amended to include three, so that I can be on there if I'm not the ex officio?
You can just approve it with that change.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
And there's no issues with quorum?
No, we would probably, um, it's not a committee, but like we did with the charter, we posted and attended participate in case we got a quorum with the commission, because then it becomes a problem when you do have a quorum and you start discussing this, because this eventually will come back to the city commission for approval, so we would have to post and attend and participate anyway.
Okay, so is that fine? Can we get a motion to approve with that, um, position?
Apologies for interrupting.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the steering committee with Commissioner Kinsley, Commissioner Lopez, and Mayor Sepulveda representing the city commission.
Okay, so, second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Item ten N, ten N, consideration and possible action to approve a substantial amendment, substantial amendment to the city of Harlingen, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, one-year action plan for, for thirty-nine thousand... for 39,000 from Vestal Park Lighting Phase III and existing activity to Vestal Park improvements and new activities, CDBG.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed, motion carries, you did a great job.
Item 10N. Consideration and possible action to approve the recommendations of the Community Development Advisory Board to fund the home ARP supportive services, CDBG.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. People love yours, Andy.
Item 10O. Consideration and possible action to execute a renewal service agreement with the University of Texas Health Science Center at Houston, excuse me, to implement the Do Salud 50 program aimed to promote healthy lifestyles and health-changing lifestyles courses for city residents and authorize the city manager to sign the contract, Parks and Recreation.
Motion approved, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Skipping on to item 10S. Consideration and possible action to accept or deny the donation offered by TXU Energy for 20, 30-gallon-sized native trees to be planted within the city of Harlingen, Parks and Recreation.
Motion approved to put them at Vestal Park, second. Aye, 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 aye. Motion is granted.
Really messing up that transcript.
You like that? Let's move it along.
All right, can we get a real motion, Commissioner?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Please thank them very much for us.
Yes, exciting stuff.
Oh, and if you can thank Do Salud, their paddle battle was phenomenal, so.
I also, I, I sent you all a summary of what we've done so far year to date. I emailed it to y'all, so just y'all can.
We just think she's incredible, she's a great addition to, to the team and everything y'all are doing. I know that the community's excited and just looking forward to more of these types of events because I wasn't able to go to beat Commissioner Lopez and so I really want us to have another, another event.
She could even hit the ball.
Okay, all right, moving on, moving on to the next item.
Item 10T. Consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to award a construction contract with RGV Asphalt LLC for the Los Vecinos Street Improvement Projects Bid 2024-15, designed by staff and funded by the Harlingen Housing Authority Engineering Department.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission, my name is Luis Vargas, I'm the city engineer for the record.
Hey Luis, are you, do you feel comfortable with who got the top, who came in at the top bid?
Yes, Commissioner.
Do you feel comfortable that they'll do a good job and we won't have any issues later down the road?
I do, I do. I do feel comfortable.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Third.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Hilda, I didn't see you there, I would've moved you out, you have a lovely, lovely day.
Item 10U. Consideration and possible action to authorize the Environmental Health Director to purchase a vehicle via TIPS USA to replace Unit 194, which was assigned to a health inspector, health department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10V. Consideration and possible action to implement a national revitalization project.
It was neighborhood revitalization project.
I was like, what is national revitalization? And then I got thrown off.
So Ford and I talked when we first got elected about making sure to keep each other honest about being and going through our neighborhoods and making sure that we give them the best services we possibly can. I would like to implement an, an operation, what I will call Operation Bonito, where I would go and each of us would go with staff through our neighborhoods to see which improvements that they need and over the next month, the following month. It's Oscar drew the short straw on this one with me. So we would go, let's say, the first weekend of the month, Oscar and I would walk through certain neighborhoods, I'd break up my district and you guys would break up your district in certain, I would call them, let's say precincts for lack of a better term. And then we would handle all those little projects that we can handle over the, the rest of that month, right? So the, I brought it up to the mayor, the mayor recommended I bring it up to you guys so that we have, everyone have the opportunity to do the same project. I know a lot of us already drive through the neighborhoods with, and, you know, do potholes and.
Having them up with us on the spot, I mean, to identify it, that's, that's the key.
But my only, my only suggestion would be that this would require that the commissioners themselves go with the staff.
Well, I got.
Yeah, yeah, they would have to be like, because I don't want just the staff going out there. I think we as commissioners should be a little bit more hands-on and be there with the staff in order to, you know, familiarize yourselves, yeah.
So my own, my other, I've been kind of reflecting on this since, and I, and I really want to commend y'all for, for all the work that you do. I know that sometimes it goes unnoticed and so I thank you, each and every, every one of you because I'm not the one going through the individual districts and finding all of the issues. I know you, you know, stuff with the park at Pendleton, you're always kind of on top of that and all of the neighborhoods in District 1 and, and I know that you do, do your drive-throughs and I know that you even considered doing them in the daytime to have better opportunity to catch or capture things and I know that, you know, you always, always do that too and I can reach out to you to talk to your constituents and. And so I know that we have a proactive commission, but having, I was thinking about this and staff and I'd like to know how, how often these are going to occur with, you know, what frequency and then I'm concerned about potential overtime for hourly staff. If it's gonna be on the weekend, like what do you envision? How this is going to work, because I don't want to overburden, also I know that city managers, their time is very important and, and if they're with you in a car, kind of driving around, that takes them away from things that they are doing. So what does that exactly look like in terms of time?
So the way I envision it, Mayor, thank you for the question, is it'd be Oscar and I. Right. We would walk through the neighborhood on the Saturday morning, right? And he and I would talk about different improvements we see that we can do in our district or in that neighborhood, right? So for me, like, I love tree canopies, like that, that, that go over the street. I know that we have a program that does the tree trimming. So Oscar and I would go through it, we would make all our notations. Monday morning, we would turn it over to staff to do it during normal business hours. So it wouldn't be anything, and they would have the rest of that month to knock it out. So if we do it first, you know, whatever, Saturday and then we, the goal is to try to knock out all those projects during normal business hours, Monday through Friday, eight to five, the, the rest of that month, and then we move to the next, the next precinct and so on and so forth.
I think, Commissioner, we need to figure out a way to prioritize what's gonna get done because as it is now, staff has a list of things they're working on. So we need to incorporate whatever it is that they're doing into that schedule already. And so I just want to make sure that the list is realistic, that we can accomplish it within the time span that staff have. And then also I'd, I'd like to be, to be considerate of staff's time on the weekends is not, not go more than four hours on, on, on a.
Yeah.
Any given weekend and generally on a Saturday, not Sunday, because obviously staff has religious obligations and so.
I think we can do this without making it hard. I mean, I think we just, we'll war game it, obviously with everybody concerned. I mean, because, yeah, you're right, we don't want, we don't want to be paying people overtime, but, you know, I will feed Oscar when I take.
Josh is off limits on Sundays. He's praying for me, so.
Can you get into his new midlife crisis card that he's got?
I saw that today, I didn't know.
You got another card? Me, Amiga? So, so I think it's gonna, I, I mean, I, I, you know, I know, like I said, I know you guys are already doing it and I, I, you know, people are always asking, like, why do we have single-member districts and instead of the at-large? And I think this is the benefit of it, right, the single member, because you are intimately connected with the people that are in your neighborhoods and you're walking them, you're with your families going to those parks and, you know, so on and so forth. But again, like, is this gonna be once a month until it'll be in District 1, 2, 3, 4, 5? Or is it gonna be more than once, like, is it gonna be every week?
Tie into with the community cleanups, the neighborhood cleanups, the code enforcement does now, that we can kind of partner them during when we do those and, and identify areas as we're driving around picking up the trash. I mean, I think it's something we could probably war game like that even.
So speaking of that, I had, I was talking to, to, and we haven't kind of had a follow-up conversation. I was talking to Javier Mendez about doing potential, getting volunteers for neighborhood cleanups and, and park cleanups and, and getting people to sign up and then maybe we can recognize them for their volunteer efforts. But having a, a schedule and maybe if we can, I, I just think we kind of need to flush it out a little more so that way they know kind of what's expected, what's expected of them. Because I, what I don't want is that every Saturday, you know, we've got one of these three guys working and, and, and if we say yes, let's do it, then that could potentially happen. I don't think so, right, but it doesn't, you never know, right? And so we want to make sure that we're being respectful of their, of their time.
And I think the best way we can do it is, instead of Oscar coming out with me, I'll have the principal come out with me. Right? And he can tell me if I'm getting too crazy, so Gabe, you're with me walking every Saturday.
I have no problem telling you that you're.
You just want to know for everything?
Really back in.
But I think Ford's correct, we'll figure it out and we'll make sure we put it together in a way that everyone's comfortable and you guys will work with us on this.
You just can't come into my office and ask for more money to do some of the stuff that you want to get done, you can't do that.
I think it'd be great.
I'll ask for it.
I think it'd be great if we could put, put something together, like memorialize how you want to get it done and then just share, share it with all of us. So that way they know what's expected of, of, because I'm assuming that everybody's gonna do it, right? Like, that's the goal?
I do it already, but, but I just want to just make sure that we're all going to have to participate. Not all of us, but what I mean is, I don't want this to become, because my whole thing is I want, I've always wanted the entire commission, because I know in the past it wasn't always the case, not you guys, but just in the past, that it, they weren't always hands-on. And I just don't want this to be something that's gonna be later on just delegated to staff, hey, go search my, through my district and see what you find. I think this is something where the commissioner has to be there, present with staff and be on hands.
Well, the way, the way I see it, Commissioner, is it's, it's commissioner-oriented and driven, right? So staff and I can just go out and walk unless, and I'm not saying they're holding my hand, I'm holding their hand.
They, they drive the city on, on a regular basis, but they may be looking for different things than, than you are.
Well, exactly, I mean, you know, one of the big things I've got in some of the older parts of District 1 is, is the alleys and I mean, to be able to walk that alley with somebody and see what's realistic and getting done, as an example. Because I see when I walk on the weekends and, you know, everybody's got alleys they gotta deal with. But, you know, it's, it's, what can we do to fix it without breaking the budget?
Right. It's like, I kind of agree with Norma, can we have something written down so we can, like, narrow it down? Because right now it seems like we're just, you're just winging everything. Because my thing is, I just want to make sure that the commissioners are involved. Because I know we're, we're doing this and then I want it to later on, you know, change. You know what I mean? So is there something to get written down or something, or what do you guys think?
You know, I can't speak for who's gonna be your, your replacement someday or his replacement someday, but I think, I mean, I'm good for it, obviously.
No, no, yeah. But I'm worried about the future.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a good idea. I, I do think personally that the commissioners should be doing this themselves and I'm not talking about y'all because y'all are doing it, but like in the future, right? Like you mentioned, you can't see what's gonna happen in the future. But if we could have something, kind of a roadmap of, of what it is that we're doing, maybe we can formalize it somehow so that way, you know, hopefully, when, when we're not here, people want to continue it because it's successful.
Let's table it and till we can back up with a plan, I mean, I think in theory, everybody's on board with it.
I was gonna say, we push forward with it, you and I are the guinea pigs and then we put forward the best practices and the plan that we've come together and give you guys a playbook on what was successful for us, what was not successful for us, and then we move forward.
Well, I really think that, I think this is good, I think it's, I like that you're being proactive and, and, and like I said, this commission does that already, but I don't want the community to feel like there's a disservice, like, oh, well, this is only happening in District 1, this is only happening in District 2 and these guys are just waiting to see how this works. I think it, you know, if we have an idea of some kind of schedule, like this is gonna happen and, and that's kind of what I was trying to get at, like, if we're gonna ask them to do it, so is that like every week? Or you're gonna, you know, what's, what are we, September, September, October, November, December? Or is it, you know, how often? So that way, they're kind of expecting, okay, this is what, you know, I'd like for everybody to participate and I think this is a good way to, to get that participation from everyone on the commission to be able to, to, to do that. Now, if, you know, it doesn't mean that it's an ordinance, you don't have to do it, but we'd like them to do, we'd like everybody to do it and if everybody has their schedule, kind of like when we did the.
That's why I said to tie it in with the neighborhood cleanups.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, I'd be, I, I'd be on board with that because then there's a schedule and there's some expectation. And again, I know everybody here even goes to those already and I know some of y'all go to each others and stuff, so it's not like, it's not happening. But that way the community, when they're looking at the video and they're saying, well, what are they gonna do? What are they talking about? And they're gonna, you know, this is kind of a pilot program, no, we have an idea and then the community knows what to expect. I think they're gonna get excited about it.
Like, I love the idea, I, this idea, I love it, it's awesome. But the thing is, the way I envision it, it's kind of like what we did with, with the town, with the, with the town halls. Because like, I think we as commissioners should be required to do this because I think this is part of the job description, we're driving around in our district, seeing what's going on. So I, I think this is a great idea, so I, I would be in favor of doing exactly what we did with the town halls, where we mandated, like, you know, a commissioner has to go at least, you know, once a quarter or something like that in his district, drive around with staff to figure out what's, what's needed and all that. So I would be in favor of that because I want to, I want to put this in the books, so that way this is mandated. So this is not just something that a commissioner wants to do or not, but this is expected. This is what the, the people of Harlingen should expect from the commissioners and it's written down, we're like, hey, we expect you to do this every quarter, you haven't done it, why haven't you done it? That's what I envision, I want it like the town hall, the town hall thing that we, we passed about a couple of meetings ago, that's what I envision. Because I love the idea, what you guys came up with is brilliant, I love it. But I want to put it on paper so then that way it'll be mandated that commissioners do it.
I'm happy to craft another one if you want. I just didn't want to impose on, I mean, I, I think it doesn't have to, I, I like that, but I don't know if that was what you were getting at with what you're doing, but that's a great idea.
To y'all's point then, let's bring it back next week, Steph, or next.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, Oscar, Ford and I and Gabe, we can get together, kind of just put pen to paper, have like a one-page memo.
And Josh, I want Josh to plan.
Josh to, because it's Monday to Friday, not really, not hitting you on Sunday. And then we can just kind of put pen to paper and get a general plan.
I think it's a good idea.
Get with code, get their schedule.
Correct.
In the meantime, we can get the cleanups that we have scheduled?
Yes, we'll get.
Yeah, that's a good idea, I think that's, that's great. And then this is a good time for us to start those others at the parks. Because I just felt, because people were, were talking about, well, you know, they give us their feedback on whatever park. Said, well, it would be great to have them kind of help in the parks themselves, so that way they get an idea of, of what it takes, right? In terms of the cleanups and, and seeing, and I know that that one time I went over to Vestal, I was, I think it was the first time that I had ever been and I met you out there and I was like, this is pristine, this is beautiful, like, I don't see any issues and I had seen some comments about the area, which is why I wanted to go out. But when I got there, I was, you know, not surprised, but I was happy to see, right, that it was so nice and clean and cut and everything. But it could be that there's somebody that goes, you know, on, on another time when somebody has, you know, left stuff all over the park or whatever and didn't get the same experience. So I think it's good to get the community involved.
And Frank, that goes back to, I had talked with you about the city cemetery down there on F Street.
Oh, that's right.
And I've already got my National Honor Society locked up, so in October, we're gonna come and do that and I'll get with you to get to date to what works best for you, so you'd be there for that.
I'll be available.
That's fantastic. All right, so is there, there's a motion to table?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Before we move off real quick, if Sancho's available for each commission, you know, we have our districts, if he can cut it up into different precincts or different little sections, as little slices and so that we can already see it and just break it up by neighborhood, because obviously we're gonna have to walk it, so don't make me walk from one side of the expressway to the other side of the expressway in like one day, okay?
Please do that.
That's why we said we're gonna feed Oscar and then we're gonna walk right off.
He's got a bicycle, right?
We can do bicycles too, yeah.
Sounds like fun.
We look forward to seeing you at each and every one, Mayor.
All right, I got my cap for the heat. All right, and so we've already taken, we've tabled the, the following item and so now, Melinda?
Item 11, board appointments. Specifically, appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by staff, you, ordinance or bylaws.
I just have a question. We are still on track to diminish the size of Key Parks Beautiful, correct? We're going to, through natural attrition, get that down to a manageable size, so I have nothing.
I'm going to be reappointing Paul J Durant to the Harlingen Community Improvement Board and reappointing June Elmo?
Remo?
To the Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board.
Does that board meet, Josh?
Well?
Kind of maybe, I mean, that's what we talked about, right?
We need to, the healthy Harlingen, we probably need to have a, so I know that it's kind of confusing on how it works, but we don't have any funding for it, and so the funding doesn't come from the city, and so there was money that we were getting in, from the Legacy Foundation, and we don't have any this time around, so it makes it difficult to do anything. So we're going to have some conversations on, on how we need to, to move forward, maybe kind of talk about what we want to do and see if there's going to be any potential for success, right, for a future grant? And if not, then maybe we need to consider about having a city, a city board, right, instead of one that, because this is one that was created when, you know, none of us, none of us were here, and then there's a nonprofit attached to it, and there's other kind of layers of, of challenges. And so we can, maybe we can work on that next week and, or the, or the following week, depends.
We submitted a, we're going to submit a grant at the end of this week to God's assistance for contingent funding the?
Right, so it is really going to be contingent upon this and the likelihood of success, and, I mean, I hope it, and, and if so, then it would be great, but it kind of limits our ability to, to do anything on that.
We're also submitting another grant for our Royal Park.
Yeah.
For the, the exercise area and the trail, so we're hoping that that gets funded.
Oh, that's the Fit Campaign, or the, that's, that's going to be great. All right, I, I don't have any appointments. Mike?
None.
None.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, if we could go back, I'm sorry, one last thing on?
Your omnibus bill?
10V, 10V, sorry, project. I've worked on, I've been working with Oscar. I have y'all's project list up and running. I'm putting in some different columns Oscar and I are working on. You should hopefully get it in the next week, so that, please read it when you get it, make sure that the projects that you want are in the appropriate areas, and then we can hopefully get that up and running in the, the meeting after that, okay? So I'll send it to you, work with Oscar, make sure, Oscar, Javier, the different departments, make sure you have all your projects in there, and then we can move forward to publishing.
I like this teacher mode. What about the omnibus bill? Where are we at with that?
Yeah.
I mean?
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, I need to get on that, so I've just been slammed. But let me knock this out, the project thing out, let me knock out this, this whole thing, let me knock out this paperwork you guys want, and then I can get to that.
Okay. I just said, because I think you had asked for it to be reoccurring.
You know how I feel now. The commissioner from District Two is always asking me for things.
All right, so we already did this approval of the board? Yes, okay. Moving on.
Item 12, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, city commission will not take any action in closed session. Item 12A, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, 1 and 2, attorney consultation, Section 551.072 regarding land issue, city attorney.
Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The time is now 8:10 PM, and we will be in executive session and be out shortly. Thank you. The time is now 8:34 PM, and we are back in open session. Melinda?
Item 13, action on executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session, section of this agenda. Item 13A, consideration and possible action on item 12A as discussed in executive session.
Motion proceeds discussed to give the city manager the final authority to resolve all issues with this one issue.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Meeting adjourned?
And we are adjourned.